Questionable. That was so-
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome to the August 7th, 2018 Post Falls City Council Meeting. We started the evening with a budget workshop, and we are now in regular session. Clerk will note that all council members are present. Under ceremonies, announcements, and appointments, we have a couple announcements. Corbin Park will be closed Wednesday and Thursday this week from 6:00 a.m. until noon for scheduled tree removal. This Thursday, August 9th, Despicable Me 3 will be playing at Saringa Park. Bring your lawn chairs and blankets and enjoy a movie under the stars. The movie starts at dusk, and as always, it's free, thanks to Blue Dog RV for their sponsorship of the movies in the park. Mr. Wilson, we had a question come up. Council Wilhelm had a question on a resolution, and it was, it's on the agenda. It was a resolution, the first item, I think it was on budget. Do we actually need a resolution for the budget tonight?
So is this for the fee increases?
No, further down under number six.
Resolution F fiscal year 2019 budget?
Oh, it's to set the budget ceiling. I'm just still trying to get my agenda to come up.
So it is just to set the high watermark?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Thanks for questioning that, Linda. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight? Seeing none, Shelley, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the June 17th, 2018 city council meeting. Item B is payables, June 10th through, I'm sorry, July 10th through July 30th, 2018. Item C is Meadow Grove First Edition Plaid Application. Item D is Master Development Agreement Addendum Number Four for Prairie Falls Spokane Street Development. Item E is Master Development Agreement for the Holon Acres Subdivision. Item F is Offsite Improvement Waiver Request for 206 West 17th Avenue. And Item G is Black Bay Park Request for Qualifications for a Master Plan and Landscape Design Service.
Questions on consent calendar?
Not yet. I'll wait till a discussion.
Okay, I had to entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Wolf?
I did have a couple questions. Item D, the Prairie Falls Agreement Addendum Number Four. I don't know who wants to speak to this, but this was originally approved in 2009. I'm wondering, how long will we continue to do this, or what? I have some questions. John, can you answer these? I don't know.
I don't think he was here in 2009.
Why would, why do we continue to just renew this for another two years, another two years? Why don't, why don't we just wait until they're ready to develop the property and they can go back and, I mean, it's master agreements, nine years old.
Yeah, Warren and I have both talked about this. When he first came on and talked about the way their current code language is, when they come in for an addendum, we look at our, what they're requesting, it was from a construction standpoint, any different than what our codes are today, anything significant. And if it's somewhat consistent with how they would do a subdivision today, we generally say, okay, it's, it's open for a potential addendum. Plus, the code also allows for them to continue to ask for addendums at this point in time with no ceiling. So that would be something we probably would need a code amendment to the subdivision ordinance, which we've discussed, which is not on the plate currently.
Mr. Wilson, anything further to add?
No, that's, that's generically correct. I mean, if, when they come in, we take a look and make sure that other requirements, the same, essentially, if we've not had a, and we've not had a big change in our subdivision code in that period of time that would drive a different style of development than what we would have gotten back at that point in time, so we take a look at that. Also, our code does speak to this essentially rolling sunset, so we do have on our plan probably, it's probably a year and a half, two years out, having a subdivision code update. Trying to wrap up the zoning code and the, the comp plan, but it is on our horizon to take a look at our codes, and that, that piece will probably get some tweaking.
Are we putting ourselves in a bad situation in any way, shape, or form by continuing to roll this over? No?
Now, for me, the sort of the, the touchstone is if they came in today and asked to do the same subdivision all over again, are you going to get the same product? And so if you said no, if you told them, you know, we're not going to do an addenda, would you get the same thing? Generically, yeah, you're gonna, it's the same type of thing that we would get if we were to run back through the, and deny it and go back through the subdivision review process all over again.
Okay, great, thank you. I also had a question on, this is, well, this one's for Bill. Item F, the offsite improvement waiver request. He said in the memo that staff reviewed and denied, but he didn't say why, I'm just curious.
As, as we look at, you know, that, that project is at the corner of Compton and 17th, and, you know, Compton's kind of one of those main corridors that run between the schools through there, so it's kind of our goal and objective to collect funds, cash out dollars from those areas, and then try to pursue grants or partner with the street department to get, you know, more, more adequate, you know, bike and ped facilities through there to connect to the schools. It's one of those main routes that kind of run north-south through the school there, so that was the reason, the main reason for that. There, there's not a lot of other areas around there, but the more we can collect dollars, the more we can be more aggressive and pursue grants with things.
So you're not really asking this gentleman to, we're going to collect money from them for, so that when we do put that in?
Yes, so we'll, we'll collect dollars in lieu of the development, and they'll be held at account as specific for that project and that address.
Could I ask you a favor, and in the future, when we deny some, request from a citizen, that we get some of that information that you just shared?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll clarify my memo in the future. Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Any other questions? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Orders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next on, next item on the agenda tonight is public hearings, and tonight we do have one. It's fiscal year 2019 fee increases. Jason's coming to the dais, but if anybody wishes to speak, there are forms in the back, please fill them out, turn them into our clerk. With that, I will open the public hearing.
I attached in your council packet, there is a fee resolution, and I had highlighted all the changes that were made, but I wanted to recap. I have a few changes that are, I just have a few changes in there, but some of them have some pretty significant increases that I wanted to touch over. Water rates are going up 3%. Wastewater, wastewater rates are going up a 7% increase for residential. The reclaimed water cap fees, based on the FCS group, the, the new rate model, there will be a decrease of 10.62% on the same rate model that we are using from the FCS group for water cap fees, we're going to show a 8.3% increase. Impact fees, we are currently using the engineering, engineering news record before we do a impact fee study to recalculate the rates. The increase from April to April is 2.8% for construction, so we're using that increase. We talked about sanitation. Post Falls sanitation is who we contract with garbage. The rates, the rate model that we have with them, based on certain indexes, Post Falls sanitation is going to receive a 4% increase, but instead of passing that rate on to the residents, there's currently enough cash available that the city can absorb that, that increase, it will just pay the, the hauler what he's, what he's owed on the contract. But since the other rates are going up for water and wastewater, the residents won't see an increase in sanitation this year. So again, with those percentages, what does that really mean to the resident? If you look from fiscal year 2018, if you have, just based on five units of water being used, you go down for your sanitation, your water connection, your water usage, your wastewater, for that, for this intent and purposes, there, for five, for 5,000 gallons, and this year your bill is $77.13, based on the proposed rates for 2019, the same water usage, the bill will be $81.14, and then you, I showed the variance by actual category, and for the Post Falls homeowner, the, the bill will increase just a little over $4 a month, so.
Those fee, excuse me, those fee increases are based on the master plan, the studies that we have done, and on the wastewater, it was a sizable increase, but it's, we've talked before, but that's still significantly less than we've had in the past.
Correct. The last few years, the increases for wastewater were 14.5% last couple of years, and then the increases are still happening at 9%, but as the years go on, the increases are, are smaller. We're in the 7% increases now, and then pretty soon they'll drop after that as well.
Jason, the, the rates that you talked about earlier, they're set pretty much by the state or whoever, there's those calculations that we have to adhere to.
Yeah, on the, on the water, for example, the, the water department did a water study, and based on their study for, for future capital needs and personnel, they've, they've recommended a 3% increase for water. The next one is for the, the cap fees. We've used the studies for the FCS group, they've turned over those spreadsheets to us, and we update those ourselves in-house, and so we calculate the current cap fee for wastewater and also the cap fee for the, for water. And then it, depending it goes, last year, there was an increase for sewer cap fees, this year there's a decrease in sewer cap fees.
And really, like the mayor said, in regard to the wastewater, we're just collecting the money that we already paid out-
Right.
-to have the plant upgraded.
Right, there is a, also, in that rate, the portion for the wastewater cap, the wastewater fee, there's also portion of that is for debt service of the DEQ loan we had to get for Phase One, and also for future, the future debt we're incurring for the, the additional construction phase.
Okay, great, thank you. Good. All right.
The next part is, I'm also, this is the first of two fee hearings. The second will be at the next council meeting on August 21st, and then at that same meeting, there'll be the, a cleaner version of the fee resolution, which will show the, the recommended changes, and then that time I'll ask for council for approval of the fee resolution at that meeting as well.
Any questions for Jason?
Yes. Just, Jason, I was thinking, under the recreation fees, those are not increases, those are just publishing what the current fees are.
Correct, they didn't change any of the fees for, for recreation this year.
They all stayed the same.
Yeah, you should have been here last year, we had a slew of them last year.
Yeah, we did.
So if the, the actual sanitation costs gone up, but we have extra cash from the water and wastewater fees, why didn't we just charge actual?
We have to keep the funds separate, the, the sanitations for garbage, we have a water fund, and then we have a wastewater fund, so it's like separate checkbooks for, for the different activities, the water pays for the water, wastewater pays for water, but when we, when we bill out for Post Falls sanitation, based on the, the rate model, the city gets a portion of what we collect, and that's supposed to be paying for staff time and any additional things that we have, like currently, we, a portion of that money goes to streets for street repairs, because obviously the garbage trucks do an impact on the street, so we, we, we take a portion of that, of revenues from the prior year, and we put that into the, we take that from the, the sanitation fund and put it into the general fund. So we have additional cash left over that, there's no way other to spend it, because we don't have, we don't have personnel tied to that fund besides the utility billing. So what we do is, we were looking at ways how we could do that, where any future garbage increases, we could use that money to help draw it down, and also, they're looking at revamp of the recycling program, any additional costs they have with that, we were looking at paying from those monies as well, without passing it on to the rate payer.
I misheard what you said, which is a different understanding, so I appreciate the clarification on, now we're on the same page.
Okay.
And, I think, Jason, that's an important point where you made that if there are any increases in the recycling program, though, we do have the funds to absorb those.
Right. One thing we've talked about with, I've met with Phil D'Amiano a couple times, and he's talking about any increase, and that was the first thing that came to mind, was we do have some cash reserves set aside, and I'd like to pay them out of that fund before we look at passing it on to the rate payer, and at this point, we haven't heard anything back from Phil, so, but when he does approach the city again, we'll be ready for that.
And that would come as a contract amendment.
That's very good. He, he, whatever, whatever change comes to, to Post Falls, he presents to me, I'll bring to council for a contract amendment, because that's where it really should be, be made, because it's going to affect his calculations on what we pay him, so I'd bring that back to council for your approval.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Wishing to speak neutral, Daniel Finley.
My concerns are answered by the chairman.
So you're okay? Perfect. Thank you. With that, no one else will close the public hearing. Counsel, how do you react?
We're not going to do anything, are we? We got to wait for the next hearing, right? Till the 21st?
So I guess we don't need a motion, do we? I don't think so. I just wanted to give you the option. I wanted to give you the option. I got two right answers down here, please no.
A move, not to move anything?
I'd vote no. Thank you very much. Next item up is unfinished business, tonight we have none, followed by citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Flowers.
Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just had a quick question. I knew it wouldn't do any good to talk about those fees, but I was wondering if we were passing on the same 7% waste treatment fees to the residents of Rathrum, since we are treating all their wastewater, waste material. And I was just wondering if, because I believe in your contract, it's every June, so I was wondering whether we pass this on to them also, because of their huge amount of growth that they're going through at this time.
We had same discussion last year when you asked, I think they provided the information, but we'll let Jason respond to that.
Each year, when I go through the calculations and I notify what our portion's going to be for Post Falls residents, I send Rathrum a letter to their city administrator and to their finance director, knowing that what we, what they send to Post Falls, that they need to charge that to their, their clients, their customers, and also for new construction, for all their cap fees, we get a list from the building department, and we bill them for that, so Post Falls does collect that amount.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good question. Anyone else? Moving right along, new business. First item is contract with TO engineers for hydro-geological study. I guess I said that right? Hydro-geological study, that's a big word. Of the community, Post Falls Community Forest.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and Council. I am Monica Ott. I'm the environmental specialist in utilities, and this evening I am requesting approval for a contract with TO engineers to conduct a hydro-geologic study on the community forest. As I'm sure most of you remember, earlier this year in January, TO engineers completed a technical memo titled "Post Falls Water Reclamation, Forest Reuse Site Permitting and Implementation," and this is probably a good example of the renaming to the community forest, but in this memo, they outlined the steps to developing the reuse site with the ultimate goal of applying effluent via drip irrigation. So these are the basic steps outlined in the memo. All of these can be broken down into multiple smaller steps, I did not do that. I just broke down the first step, investigation and entitlements, and you can see that the first one, under that is a hydro-geologic investigation. I also want to point out that the second step, the permit application, and that's for a reuse permit from DEQ, is fairly high in the process, and the hydro-geologic investigation would be included in that application's middle. So in really basic terms, the overall purpose of the hydro-geologic study is to understand the groundwater beneath the community forest. The contract that I'm discussing tonight is for Phase One of the hydro-geologic study, and that is basically a conceptual groundwater system characterization. It's conceptual in that it is a qualitative assessment of how water enters, moves through, and leaves the groundwater system. It's qualitative in that it's descriptive and narrative and not quantitative. So two other very important things that the study will provide are identifying possible quantity locations and costs for future monitoring wells, as well as providing recommendations for suitable geophysical methods for Phase Two. An example of geophysical methods is vertical electrical sounding. This is like taking an electrical signal, sending it into the ground, and based on how it comes back, it can tell you the substance, the depth to that substance, and the thickness of that substance, whether it's water, gravel, or a type of rock. An important thing to remember is that, if you've been out there, I'm sure you know this, the community forest is not a flat field. The topography is quite varied, with canyons, does have flat areas, as well as many sloping areas and some streams. So water can move through these areas in different ways, depending on the geology underneath, and it's important to know how the water's moving if we're going to apply water on the So the project timeline in TO engineers agreement is that they'd be on site this summer in 2018, and then this fall, compile information and prepare the reports, and then project completion would be January 31st of 2019. The cost for this contract is $37,275, with $23,000 of that going to the subcontractor hydrogeologist. And this cost, as I alluded to earlier, is not just for one product, it's also for the recommendations and a plan of sorts to help Phase Two be done efficiently. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Monica, it's, this study's going to have to be done before we can enter the permitting process, is that correct?
I would say it's a step into the permitting process.
But we're not going to be able to apply out there without having done the appropriate work?
It is highly recommended to do this, I'm not going to say we have to do it, but there's a lot of money being spent in multiple areas for this land application for reuse. The monitoring wells specifically are expensive, and knowing exactly where they should be and not, I'm not going to say guessing, but knowing where they should go is probably a pretty wise use of money.
Sure. Any questions?
Monica, once, once we get this study done, are we going to be able to submit for that permit then, at that time?
So this is just one step, as I said in that previous slide. We have other things to do as well, the silviculture plan, boundary and topographic surveys. This is one in many things that will go into that permit application, as, not even touching on construction.
Right, right, right. Okay, that's good. We, are, you're looking for approval from council then to move forward with this, correct?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Orders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Monica, appreciate it. Next item up's Beyond Green Inc. easement request, Mr. Beecham. No offense, John, but it was nice to hear from someone else in your area.
Glad to share the presentation, Wolf.
We hear from you all the time.
I have John Beecham, Utilities Manager, for the record. I have kind of an interesting request for you tonight. Usually, we would bring you a finalized easement, this one has some interesting elements to it, so we wanted to bring you the concept and get some feedback, which could be incorporated into a finalized easement, if that is the desire. So I'll show you some maps in a second, but in general, we have a request for 120-foot non-exclusive easement along the southern portion of one of our land application properties, not the community forest, which was just discussed. The request is for various utility needs, the primary thing to discuss tonight is for an overhead power line. So in terms of the lay of the land and where this is, I grabbed this aerial image from one of our master plans, this shows various reused properties owned by the city of Post Falls. You can see the pointer on the screen here, this is Greens Ferry Road running north and south, and Hayden Avenue running east and west, and parcel we're talking about is to the north and east of Hayden and Greens Ferry. Zooming in on that, at the bottom of this screen, you can see the requested easement just shown with a simple line. I do want to say two other easements have already been granted to Beyond Green by neighboring property owners. Easement number two in this is actually from the city of Rathrum. That's for a similar easement, 120 feet on the eastern half of their property running up Greens Ferry. And then, again, a similar easement from the property owner to the north of that, running up to property which is currently owned by Beyond Green. And then, on the south and east of this requested easement, is property that's owned by Beyond Green. So that gives them a transmission corridor for this transmission line. And I've also shown in here, in the dotted line on the top, where there's an existing transmission line corridor, kind of purpose of everything here. As examples of what they have indicated they would like to construct here, it's a monopole design that they're looking at putting in, high voltage transmission lines, you see them place to place, I believe these are a little bit bigger than the ones that are currently on Hayden Avenue that Goodney Electric Cooperative owns. I don't, I asked, as term, in terms of what size line they would need, and that is not currently known, so the exact voltage of the line is not something that's been determined yet. And that would obviously determine the size of the pole, et cetera, et cetera. Getting into specifics, this is an easement that was prepared by the consultant for the, for Beyond Green, that's JUB Engineers. I cut the bottom block off of this to blow it up for the screen, but it does say JUB down on the bottom. It's fairly straightforward, it's 120 feet on the southern portion of a quarter acre, quarter section. I do want to point out, there's a railroad right-of-way that runs through the southeast portion of the property, and a small triangular piece of property that is also owned by the city of Post Falls. So that's about four and one-half acres of property to the southeast of that railroad line. Trying to give you the lay of the land a little bit, so that when we get into the details, some of these things make a little bit more sense. The obvious benefit is this provides a utility corridor for the tech park, which is Beyond Green's development. So supporting that is presumably in the economic interest of the city. They've also offered to pay market rate for the easement to the city, so they're not asking for this land, they're offering to pay for the use of it, and they've also offered to provide an irrigation system that would allow us future abilities to basically distribute water on that reclaimed water. Currently, we own a pivot on that quarter section, a pivot is one of the sprinklers that goes in the circle. If you put power poles on the edge of your property, you can't really irrigate where those power poles are, so they have indicated a willingness to provide an irrigation system under the power line. Some of the concerns, and this is really why we're here today, to make sure we're headed in the right direction with the easement we bring you, is the, is a question of whether overhead power lines would affect the long-term value of that property, which is a pretty major holding for the city. In years past, a couple of years ago, the city required- In years past, a couple of years ago, the city required a transmission line, I don't know the exact differences in the sizes, again, because I don't know the size of this line, but the city required that Kootenay Electric Cooperative install a transmission line underground through our property about one mile to the west of this facility. Easements granted by Rathdrum and the property owner to the north of Rathdrum do allow for overhead power lines, so you kind of have some conflicting requirements from neighboring easements and things we've required on our own property in the future. In addition to that, if we did require an underground easement, that would translate into five to 10 times more expensive construction costs for Beyond Green. As I mentioned, there's a concern about complication of water reuse. That concern is largely mitigated with the use of a separate irrigation system. It'd be slightly more complicated, but not really something that should factor too much into the decision. And there's also a question about the decreased value of the small land parcel on the southeast. And I'm gonna back up to the map and show you that. Southern line here is currently usable property. If we were to sell this and allow somebody to develop on it, you take 120 feet off of that, you've reduced that four and a half acres by quite a bit. It would be a non-exclusive easement, so presumably you could put something like a parking lot there, but you're not going to have tall trees or an apartment three stories high underneath the power line, to pick some tall examples. The other concern is long-term value of the land, just in general. Received question as to whether we are guaranteed to use this land for water reclamation purposes. I'd say it's in our plans right now, and with the technologies that I'm aware of, yes, we will use this land for water reclamation purposes. I can also say a lot has changed in the years I've been in the industry, and I expect a lot to change in the coming decades. So, there is a potential that 20, 25 years from now, a technology exists for wastewater treatment, which doesn't today, that would offset the need to use this property. In that situation, I want to make sure that we've kept that land as valuable as possible for the city, for whatever we might want to do with it in that case. Having presented some of the benefits and concerns and details, I'd be very interested in your feedback and any questions you might have. And I believe there are representatives from Beyond Green here who could ask, answer questions for you as well.
One of the questions I asked earlier in a meeting was on the overhead versus underground, and because of the size of line, if you will, or the amount of wattage, the expense, they felt was closer to the 10 times more expensive than if you put it overhead, number one. Number two, the properties to the north, as you say, have already given them the easements for that, so it probably would make sense. I would, I personally would feel different if, if it were in a piece, on a piece of property that we were going to use for something other than reclaimed water, water application. And I think when, when I look at the overall economic impact that Beyond Green is proposing for their development, the tech park and stuff, I was, I'm convinced that that was, it's my opinion, it's a good decision and to allow that, but that's just me. Open it up, Joe.
We've already had a precedent, and another piece of property had the power and transmission lines go underground. I think that precedent should be taken into account, partially because one thing we hear all the time from citizens is, you know, "We're growing too fast, save the prairie, save the prairie." So, you know, one benefit of having water reclamation, land application up on there is that it does preserve some of that open space. Now, you slap a bunch of 80-foot power lines on there, it's not really preserving anything. One thing, a curious question I do have for the developers is, is that 10 times cost, what total development cost does that represent? Is that 0.1% of the total cost of development? Is it 10%? How big of an impact would it have on the resale value to go underground versus up? I don't know if that's...
On the resale value or just the actual cost?
The, the extra cost of the entire development.
Brad, do you have that, that you can guestmate? Or Phil?
Because if we're talking less than half a percent...
It's huge.
Good evening, Council. Brad Marshall, JUB Engineers, representing Beyond Green. Specific to Councilman Malloy's question, that size of transmission line runs about a million dollars a mile, and it is about 10 times that cost to underground it. So, that's why you rarely, rarely see that size of power line underground, only a few places in the country, actually. Not only is it a cost factor, but it's also a, a safety issue as well, because these are significant power lines, and they're nothing you want to actually dig up. In terms of the overall percentage of the project cost, I really can't speak to that. I, I can't tell you, this is a, the tech park alone is, is a significant investment, it's a significant economic driver to our community, has a potential to be. As much as I'd like to answer a question, I can't on that one.
My thought process is, if my grocery budget a month is $500, and I spend a dollar a month on soda, and that goes up by 10 times, then it's not affecting my budget very much, right? So, I guess that's kind of why I want some sort of indication of that.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, but at this point, I'm not, I would ask the council members to reflect everything else that's in the decision-making process as part of the decision. Stand for the questions.
When I was reading through this, aren't you going to be going underground with other utilities along that same easement?
It's a non-exclusive easement, so there's a possibility that you could see water or wastewater lines, or fiber lines, or something like that, but that level of power line, large KV line, really is an overhead line.
So, you're not, you're not actually gonna be doing something under that easement as part of this project?
We aren't at this point.
Oh, okay. I guess I missed right there.
Requesting the easement. Also considerations, our client is actually offering a fair market price and appraised value of that easement, so it would be reflected in the ultimate negotiation, the ultimate offer.
Do we have any idea what that dollar amount would be? What's the fair market value for an easement?
I'll ask my counterpart to address that question.
Good evening, Council. Jeremy Russell with JUB Engineers, also representing BGI. So, as you mentioned, you know, we've acquired, you know, two other easements, and for one of those was exclusive, and the exclusive easement was half of the appraised value of the property. The other easement was non-exclusive, and it was something just a little bit less than that. So, exclusive, of course, meaning that they have full control, you know, of the corridor. Non, meaning that there can be other things, you know, as, as John mentioned, that the city could put in that corridor.
Still looking for a dollar amount?
So, in that case, you gotta remember, there's different acreages, but in that case, it was about $90,000 for one easement that probably compares in square footage size to this one.
That's $90,000 a year that'll be coming to us?
No, it's $90,000, period. Yeah. Yeah. It's kind of a percentage of a purchase price. You know, it's the right to use it, there's still benefit, of course, you know, like John mentioned, you'll still be able to use it for land app, but it's the right to use this aerial, you know, overhead, overhead line. Okay. Yes, do you?
Question, who will actually own the transmission line?
BGI will own that transmission line.
So, you'll contract with Avista or contract with?
Someone.
Electric to supply the power to?
Right. Those things are still being worked out. You know, our first step is getting the easements, you know, procured, you know, and then we'll go through a finite design process, you know, to start putting that together. Linda?
There was some mention in the packet of the, about four and a half acres in that corner, that really, once you slice off that 120 feet from the, from the roadway in, is really an unusable piece of property. Are you interested in possibly purchasing that as well?
I, I think, I think there's two things. One is, because it's non-exclusive, you know, you can continue, whoever was to buy that could continue to use it to a degree. So, when we pay fair market value, we're going to pay for the impact to that. We're gonna offset that impact somewhat. And, and I think our client would be amenable to perhaps looking at that small stretch differently, maybe perhaps increasing the value, you know, of the easement through that one small stretch, you know, to, to offset that. But our view is that we, like I said, we want to pay fair market value to make sure that that's offset for the city.
So, you, you will be getting an appraisal?
Yeah, we certainly, that's exactly what we did on the others. We used an appraisal basis for the purchase price. Yes.
What other power opportunities are there to go into the tech park? I mean, I'm curious why you're tapping into that line and running it, running it down that way anyway. I mean, Avista or Kootenay have power available to that?
No, not, not lines of this size. These are, you know, could be up to like 500 KV lines, and, you know, the, the lines that are existing right now don't have near that load, or not that load capability. That's a great question.
So, is that Bonneville power that's, that you're looking at taking power from?
Correct. It will go up into that corridor, that's correct.
Any other questions? Need action on council's part tonight, correct? Not again.
Just some, some direction, so we know which, where we're gonna go.
Counsel, what's your direction, staff, on this?
I think the benefits outweigh any kind of negativity to it. The tech park, I think, is very important to the city, that's my opinion, so I would, I would be in favor of moving forward with, at least see an appraised value and... Is that what you're looking for?
General, yeah, so I think the three things that I was looking for, kind of in order, are general support, and I think I've heard that pretty clearly, above ground or underground, if there's a general leaning one direction or the other for what you'd prefer, and then, kind of to Linda's question, if you'd like us to, if you guys are interested in that four and a half acre parcel being treated a little differently.
I'm just one voice, I just, I don't feel like we quite have, I know some stuff is yet to be determined, but a clear picture of the dollars and cents, and how, how big of an impact would this have on the success of the project? If we did, if required to go underground, is it a significant impact? Is it small? We don't really know. So, at least I didn't see any numbers to convince me that it would be a significant impact, or that it wouldn't be. It's, it's just up in the air. So, I guess I would like to see more data before I could give a clear direction.
If we directed to move forward to bring that data back to you, would that work?
Yeah, I'd be happy with that.
Yeah. And actually, I'd like to have a more visual on what the power line would actually look like, on that, you know, if they have any idea at that time of the size and what we're actually looking at, the scope of the project. And will they have that same type of transmission line on their own property? You know, but does it just extend down then to their property?
Lynn, any further comment?
No, I, I think that covers it. I mean, it sounds like the, the local utilities don't have the ability even to provide the power, so it sounds like we're pretty much stuck if we're gonna go with an overhead power transmission line to the properties. But again, I'd like to see some numbers on that and see before we can make that final decision, so... Have we approached the property owners to the south?
I have not.
JUB?
We have had discussions with the property owner to the south. I think that we felt, because of our partnership with the city, that knocking on the city's door, working with, you know, in concert with the city, was our first choice. You know, and I think it makes sense, just because of the land app, you know, use, I think that it makes the most sense. To answer your question about the, the look of the, the poles, in your council packet, there are a couple of photos, these right here, that show in concept, you know, what they could look like. We're probably a ways down the road of being able to come up with something, what they look like exactly, and the reason for that is because this is, is sort of the ultimate chicken and the egg game. You know, we have to have all of these pieces in place in order to attract a big user, and for that big user to come, they send, you know, these big teams in, they have code names, you know, we don't even actually get to talk to the, you know, the user, they send these, these teams of site selectors in, they want all the answers, checklist, do you have all these things in place? And if you don't, they're just gonna move on. You know, they're not even gonna look at us as an alternative. So, that's why we have to put, you know, all these things in place, get our, our ducks in a row to attract those users. And with regard, you know, great question about the, the precedent issue, and the line that Kootenay Electric put in underground down the road was much less voltage than what we're putting in. I talked to several power experts, and they didn't know of a, of a line our size anywhere in the northwest that they knew of that was underground. And the ones that they did know of are away from us in urban set, yeah, in urban settings that were, I mean, it's, it's an extreme situation. Just, you know, Brad mentioned the safety, and I think that's one of the big issues, is it's one of those lines that if you dig into it or even close, it's such a safety issue that they, they wanna have it overhead.
Could I ask one more question? With the easements that you have already obtained from the city of Rathdrum, is that correct, and then one other property owner? In, in that easement deal that you have with them, have they, they've approved these power lines, they've seen them, they know what they're gonna look like, that's all been disclosed?
Correct.
So, you're gonna be going up the road with those power lines, and then kind of a blank spot, and then up the road with the power lines again? So, I mean, that's what the map looks like.
So, it's, it's a little bit deceiving, that map is a little bit deceiving, so it is a continual corridor all the way from that property to the north. You traverse through the central premix site, and then you go kitty corner over to the Rathdrum property, go along the easterly side of the Rathdrum property, and then across the road, across Greens Ferry from the city property. And then that would be continual over to BGI. So, those little breaks really don't exist. I mean, there, there is continuity there.
No, my point was...
Oh, sorry.
They're, they're, they're going to be there anyway. Those big power lines are gonna be on that easement number one and number two.
That's correct.
And what you're requesting now is for the same thing to be on the easement that you're requesting to purchase from the city?
That's correct.
Okay.
One thing, one thing I'd like to point out, that's a great question, and I'm glad you brought that up, those photos that I, that I presented are actually, they're down in the Boise area, and they are at Eagle and McMillan, which is a very vibrant, you know, corridor, well-built out, you know, it looks great. They intermingle among subdivisions and, and do it quite nicely. I mean, it, unless you're really looking for them, and I was down there recently, and I, I noticed them, because, you know, we're working on this project, and so that's why I pulled them up and used them. But it, it would be very similar to that. They, they tie in extremely well to the adjacent infrastructure. I was actually surprised at how well.
Any other comments? So, John, did you get what you need from council as far as, I think we want, we'd like to see some numbers, more specific numbers?
I've heard a request, a request for some costs and some more specifics, and I think we can bring those back to you.
I don't, didn't hear of anybody who's opposed to at least moving forward to that step?
No. I'm good.
Give you what you need?
Thank you for your time.
Good, thank you. Next item up is ordinances and resolutions. We have two resolutions tonight.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2019 budget.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wellhum?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy? Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Second resolution?
Move to approve the plumber forest comprehensive plan map amendment.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon?
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wellhum?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Administrative staff reports, residential zoning update, proposed workshop, Mr. Manley.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, members of council.
here, to request a workshop, more or less, to further discuss the residential zoning, how it's affecting Post Falls, details of that, and potentially a housing needs assessment with that. So typically you see me have a PowerPoint and I go through kind of a slideshow to discuss this, due to this, the various natures of documents, I'm going to be kind of perusing through various data that I have, but before I begin, I think it's good to acknowledge North Idaho, Post Falls is a good place to live. We're all here for different reasons, but there's great rivers, great lakes, fishing, hunting, hiking, golfing, kayaking, a lot of things people like to do. There's people living in areas where they may or not be enchanted with where they live, and they're relocating to a place that's very inviting that we currently have in the inland northwest. So if you look at KMPO, who's looked at our historical growth trends, I'll put up their map here, looking at their growth projections. Bit of a glare, that's why I typically like PowerPoints, but, so this is in green here, the intent isn't to grow all the way onto the green with this KMPO map, but what it is, is these are TAS zones that look at growth areas, and so as you get closer to, like in, out in this big TAS area, it grows probably going to occur closer to Highway 41 and Prairie, further to your urban areas, not grow all the way out to the furthest extent, the plan isn't to go into Rathrum. I'll try to get the growth rate to come in clear here. It's a little fuzzy, so I apologize for that.
It's a lot fuzzy.
But what this says is by 2040, the projection is to have about 105,000 people in Post Falls based off historical growth, so currently being at about 35, that'd be 70,000 increase in people to Post Falls. If you take our PPH, which is persons per household, that'd be about an additional 26,000 households in the city of Post Falls. Now, currently we're approximately, and I'll go into the details of that, we're approximately about 23% multifamily with that equating to about 6,600 additional multifamily units to get to that 2040 number based of current patterns. So this is our really colorful zoning map that has a bunch of different zoning districts on it that create different scenarios, industrial land for industrial development, commercial, so industrial is the gray, red being the community commercial services, providing the commercial opportunities, the spectrum of yellow to orange, those are residential zones, providing residential opportunities, we also got the purple patterns, which is smart code, they all are just, have different implications for different types of development. We recently created the technology mix zone, which is a mix between industrial and commercial, hence the hash between the red and gray. So we look at 26%, I mean 23% multifamily, but when you look at the zones, I had this made today so we can have an idea of the map, what does that mean for percentage of land mass, because there's a difference from percentage of housing units to land mass, so when you look at, so the biggest percentage is R1, it's 50% of the city is single family, and then you can look at your R3 zone, which is 1.7, you have your R2 at 2.3, but then you have, you know, CCS and industrial, so it appears as if a little over 25% of the city is, or 30% of the city is commercial, industrial, with single family, with the rest of, of the spectrum being gobbled up in various degrees. Recently, you may have heard in some of the presentations, I claimed that we have 1,800 units that we can be built, so I wanted to shed more light on that, because I'm kind, I was the source of that information, so I want to provide that for you, and it's actually been updated. Now I know why I do PowerPoints.
And we'll make sure and send this all out to council after, so you have copies of it to you later.
So, and this right here, so we had, I broke out this to multifamily, under-constructed, under-construction, multifamily, either constructed or under-construction since 2014, multifamily under-construction 2017, 18, and multifamily here that could be constructed. You know, really not pleased with the clarity of this.
We had it, we lost it, there we go.
Oh, there we go. All right, thanks, Kit. So, so the 1,800, which was referred to, was the sum of the multifamily under-construction and multifamily approved that could be constructed, so I've highlighted, underlined the totals to do the total, now it's been updated to about 2,100. Now, I highlighted the, some yellow areas because they're part of PUDs, and so they may or may not come to fruition, so the point special use permit could allow for up to 417 units, that's an important word there is "could." I know that one of the phases that they ever had an option on, multifamily developers no longer doing that, so that's reducing the, the total number for that site, but based on a special use permit, they could build up to that. This also brings in the complexity of our zoning map, when you look at the percentage of breakdown, we also have things like PUDs and special use permits that then increase the potential of multifamily or other types of development. So I was wanting to describe to you kind of how we get to the 23%. So what I've done since the 2010 census, when the population was about 27,574 for Post Falls, I've done these annual population reports to kind of look at where we're at. So the last one we sent out was looking at, was in 2018, August of 2018, and we looked at as of January 1st, what was our population, could we take our year end from 2011, 12, 13 on, we took our years and building reports for total number of single family and multifamily, and added those to the 2010 census, so it keeps us kind of a logging track based off permits to where we could be based off vacancy rates. And so we looked at here that, you know, you see the two breakdowns between single family and multifamily, and you can see here that we're at 33,709 at the end of 2017, which put us at about 23% ratio of multifamily to total housing units. And then you can see here, I cited in this one, the national average was 39%. We haven't completed this year's report yet, we're in the process of doing that now, but you can see here that the percentage increased from just about 23% to now 23.75. So this would be now our new estimated, it's not finalized, population for January of 2018 with a growth rate of 4.26, and what you see, she see here is numbers that are in the data table showing that these were added, so seeing with the 355 based off that building report was added there, and also with the 238 there, so that's how we keep track of, and why we're at 23.1. It's possible if you added future projected housing units to this, you would get probably a higher percentage, but then you'd also, we don't know how many single families are coming in the future either, so it's real speculative to be adding future potential housing units to this analysis. So that was the, going, delving into the complexity of just the zoning and assessment of housing units, there's also aspects to this that look at, you know, market conditions and where we, we're sitting in the state, and so looking at the most expensive areas based off of getting a reasonable income for covering a percentage of your income to rent, you can see here this was, you know, what the average is for 30% of the income a household must earn annually, and so they break this down here, so for Coeur d'Alene, for this MSA being the fourth most expensive, takes 1631 to get a two-bedroom housing, so that would be the, the income needed to have that be 30% of your rents. Also, there's some interesting facts here that for Idaho as an average, it takes 85 hours of work per week for minimum wage to afford a two-bedroom rental house. So as we become more attractive for people to come here and bring their money from other states with their equity, they bring it up to housing prices, makes it more and more complicated for our workforce to find housings, which is displacing them with a reasonable ability to buy a single-family home into desiring other housing opportunities. So you can also look at other facts, when you look at, and this one right here is, you can see the source, Housing Idaho Inc., as of June 1st, the vacancy rate for Cootney County was 1.2%. Also, putting that in context, it says here that a healthy rent for vacancy rate would be between 5 and 7%, so we're significantly below what they consider a healthy vacancy rate, so there's definitely signs still that even though that we're getting apartments and people are occupying, that the vacancy rates are low, and we're still significantly lower than the, of a healthy rate, which then is why rents would typically go up. Also, I wanted to shed light before we go into that workshop, would be for Idaho Fair Housing, they have elements that, me as a planning manager here with the city, shepherd to kind of steward their, their initiatives a little bit. So one of them is looking at multifamily parcels, and so, so highlighted areas of concern here is, for us to be consistent with, is that at least one zoning district that allows the construction of multifamily housing and mapping enough land into the district to allow a reasonable chance for some multifamily housing to be developed. So they're basically stating, make sure, even though you have one district, you need to make sure you're proportionate in how much land you have available to the demand. Similarly, for incentives, in order to encourage the development of affordable housing, the code should recognize the difficult economies involved and should offer incentives. So common incentives include smaller lots, increased density in multifamily areas, reduced parking requirements or waivers, reduction, application fees and development impact fees. So this is from the Fair Housing as far as things to consider when you're looking at housing, how it affects your community, so it's really complex, probably can go into further detail and, in a workshop, and have some real open discussions, and also delve into why having a housing needs assessment could answer a lot of these questions that off the cuff seem a little bit mystifying.
Question for you, John. Population 2,040, 105,000, is that the city's goal?
That there, I don't believe is anybody's goal, I see that as...
City's plan?
I would not see it's...
At the city's number? I'm making a point, there are consultants out there that came up with this, last take, last time I came up with it, all we heard was that that was the city's goal, to grow to 90-some thousand people by the year 2035. My point is that is not the city's goal, that's an independent consulting firm, consulting firms' projections, but it is not the city's goal, that's not, I'll speak for myself, that's not what I'm striving for. So I, I just wanted to make sure that was understood, because I'm fairly certain that it will be repeated, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because, you know, when I got the number, I was equally starstruck, because then we're looking at all these TAS zones saying, where are you going to fit these people? So, I mean, so, but the same token, it brought some good exercises, and it'll help us in our comp plan and our zoning ordinance update to look at if it did occur, we're at least prepared for it and where it should occur.
Yeah, but my point is it's not our goal to get there. Lynn?
John, I would like to thank you so much for this, because I know that I've, you know, been asking you a lot of questions for a lot of data and a lot of maps, and you've got it to me, and I appreciate it very much. And I would also like to say, I think it's pretty easy to, to piggyback on what the mayor said, it's pretty easy to do the map, or the math, all you have to do is go to your number of permits that you're doing, you know, historically every year, and to get to 105 people from 33,000 people, how many new employees are you going to need down there? I mean, it just, it doesn't even calculate, and we've talked about that many times amongst us, so I just really appreciate the work you did on it very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And you, yeah, I just piggyback on that too, and Linda, thanks for asking those questions, because I know that when we talked about this earlier, that this is exactly what I feel like we need to get out to the, the citizens to know, like, what's going on? People say we got too much multifamily, do we? I think you're, you've answered a lot of those questions, and I look forward to the, the, the workshop, but what you're showing me tonight is awesome, really, I really appreciate it, John, thanks for the work.
Yeah, thank you.
And did you need to schedule a workshop or just let us know that there's going to be one forthcoming?
So we'll work on setting one up, it's probably because of the complexity of the topic, we're probably not going to be able to handle in a half hour before council meeting, so it'll probably have to be a standalone meeting at some point, we'll work on scheduling that.
I would certainly encourage that.
You know, you talked about needs assessment, and we had a conversation week ago, two weeks ago, and needs assessments can be two-edged swords, you can say, because I, I've been one that has said we have too many apartments, but if you need a assessment, it says you don't have enough apartments, is that then an impetus for people to go more? So it can be a two-edged sword, but I think it does tell you, it can tell you where you are and where you might need to be, so.
Good stuff.
Good job.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, John.
Thank you.
Mayor's comments, Chief Mayor, I don't know if your folks have been involved in any of the firefighting, but in looking at all the fires in the area and across the country, and when we see the deaths of the, the folks that are, please, yeah, come on up, but I want to thank you for what you and your whole profession is doing, because it's a tremendous impact right now. Warren, it's okay if I had him come up, isn't it?
Do whatever you want. You're the mayor? I'll just slap you down.
Mayor and council, for the record, Warren Merritt, Fire Chief, KCFR, this is a unique time, I think, right now, we have what I would call very unusual fire activity, certainly a week ago, when the, when the, when there was a failure on a plane that caused several fires, we had our resources committed for about three hours, we had to call people back to continue to cover the EMS and the fire calls that happened while all of us were up in the Rathrum area. Right now, we don't have, have anybody deployed outside the area, we recently signed an agreement with, with the Idaho Department of Land so that we could, we're in the middle of rostering. Sometimes it's difficult for us to deploy to California and Oregon, because we only have 15 people on duty every day, and that is not a lot when, when, when we get to activity such as we're experiencing here in the area. This week, knock on wood's good, but we're very concerned about Thursday of this week, when we jump up into the high, you know, the, the low hundreds, 107 is what we're hearing. In those environments, we end up having the high temp and extremely low humidity, I was just working with the Coeur d'Alene Press today on, on some information about what can happen with people, you know, discarding cigarettes and, and things like that, so this is a, a time where we want people to exercise extreme caution, it's a time when we can expect that we're probably going to go to a level one restrictions in terms of that, which would then stop all recreational fire activity, that's probably an action that I'll take on Friday to stop all outside fires, we want them, obviously... We want them, obviously, if they're doing it between now and then, to make sure that they're out and cold before they go to bed. It doesn't take a lot of wind with the relatively low humidity and the amount of moisture content that we find in, that what I should say, the lack of moisture in the grasses and the small lumber. The thousand-hour fuels, which are your trees, they're extremely dry as well. And we're just in August, we could really use a lot of rain soon, and that's what I can stress, that I can't stress enough. So there's even going to be requirements under Level 1 that preclude or restrict where you can actually do smoking. You know, we don't want people throwing cigarette butts in, in the beauty bark when it's next to a house, because it eventually can then smolder in those light fuels overnight, and then next thing you know, you wake up and your neighbor's calling because there's a house on fire, I've been to plenty of those in my career. So this is a time that's not going to restrict barbecues, obviously, in people's backyards and stuff like that, but our folks are working hard, it's not easy to go to house fires in 100 degrees. It wears our people out very, very quickly, but what they do is they go to that fire, they put it out, and then they get ready for the next round, whether that's an EMS run, which is about a dozen to 18 a day for those as well. And obviously, the majority of our activity is here in Post Falls. We're fortunate during these busy times when we get assistance from the police department here inside the city on EMS runs, and that's a plus for us. They can assist us in rendering early and immediate first aid, whether it's a CP, especially in situations where it's CPR. That's a big plus for us, until we can get some people back. In Cootney County, it's really unique. When somebody needs help, we go and help, and in fact, we'll empty our district if that's what it takes to help mitigate fires that are endangering other communities that are within Cootney County. So whether it's a fire or emergency medical call, we rely on our partners very heavily, as they do on us. So again, this is a time for, for me to just express a lot of caution in our community, especially this week, while we expect a downturn in the temperature on Saturday. What brings that in is a lot of wind because of the onshore flow. So it's during that transition time that we can be especially in some additional danger in terms of a fire spreading very, very quickly. So again, this is, last week was a pretty unique week. We're fortunate so far, knock on wood, that the fires we have been having have been kept small. We have had a number of structure fires, just small ones though, so that's, that's really good news, and we're happy when, when we're not going to those on a regular basis, because that means people aren't being hurt and they're not being displaced, so that's good. So I appreciate the opportunity to, you know, maybe just take a couple of minutes, I'm sorry I was on the phone during public comment and didn't get a chance to come up here tonight, because I was going to talk about the extreme fire conditions we had, and so this was, I appreciate you taking your time.
We appreciate you.
Bowing me to come up here and just spend a couple of minutes.
Appreciate you and what your team does, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to give it a shot, other than, don't play with fire. This is, this is really the, this is really a tough time of the year, and without any rain in sight, you know, we don't know if our season's going to be later this month, in September or October, we don't know when it's going to hit. But if it doesn't rain, I'll guarantee it, with some good luck. Anybody can ask anybody for some help, we'd be happy to take that as well. Anyway, our firefighters are working hard for you, I will guarantee you that, and we're, and we're really proud of our staff.
Thank you very much. Along the temperature line, Chief Knight made a comment that today they had four road rage incidents that he's aware of. You know, I guess I could have been one, I had a 3:30 meeting, I left Coeur d'Alene at five minutes to three, and I got to the city hall at 3:46, I think, or 3:36, it took me 40, 40 minutes, 45 minutes. And it's awful easy when you're driving, and you can't get on the freeway, and you can't get out southeast, and you can't get anywhere else, and you still need to come this direction for people to get irritated, especially with the temperatures. So Chief, we appreciate what you, you and your folks do to help try to mitigate stupidity on people like my partner. I didn't do it, but, but we, we appreciate what you folks do as well, so. Council comments, Linda, you add something?
Yes, I do. And Kit's going to help me out. And first of all, I would like to thank Kit, she's just another prime example of a wonderful employee at the city of Post Falls. She always steps up and helps us do anything that we need. The Post Falls Art, Public Arts Committee, which I'm a member, Carrie Thorson is a member, Shelley, Dave Fair, there are several of us in the community. We have decided that, and well, we've already ordered it, so it's on order, but we are going to put this eagle, this oversized eagle, it'll be about the same size as the fish that is up at the freeway entrance. We are going to put that down in one of the landscape medians, south of the fish, and Bill Melvin has helped us pick out a spot where we can do that. We're not going to put it really high in the air, so it's not going to be a big cost to anybody to put it way up high. We're going to keep it low, like the fish is. We are raising money right now, and I would like to just ask if anybody would like to donate. They can drop off their donations, big or small, to City Hall, and just put the eagle in the memo line of your check, if you would, or at Community, Post Falls Community First Bank. Jerry Lyon has been gracious enough to say that you can drop off your donations there as well, same, same memo line, the eagle, and I'll go pick those up. Or you can call me at that telephone number, if you can't get out and bring it down, and I will come and pick it up. Our goal is about 7,500. Thank you, Carrie Thorson, I love you, for your money. And we're just trying to really get, get, well, I love you for other reasons too. We're just trying to get some art in the downtown area, so any help that anybody can give us, and again, thank you, Kit, very much, she put it out on Facebook, and we'll see where it goes, so just really appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your efforts on that.
Yes.
Steve?
A couple of weeks ago, Chief Knight offered the council a tour of the computer forensic lab, and I know a few of us took advantage of that, and I'd like to tell him how impressed I was by going through that. Neil Urick, the officer in charge, is very knowledgeable, and I was just amazed of what he's done. And just like to thank you for the protection of our kids, our family. I think if the public knew what, how much work you're doing in prevention, it's, it was amazing. So I was very impressed, and his training's impeccable, and like, the first question I asked was, if we ever lose you, is there a replacement or something? He has such vast knowledge. But thank you for that invitation, and I learned a lot, and was pretty much amazed, so. So it was a great service you offer, kind of an unknown service that you're performing for our community, but very valuable, once you have a chance to tour it and know what you're doing out there with that lab.
And the price was right.
Yeah.
Funded elsewhere.
I would just like to echo that, because I agree, it was a great tour, appreciate that. I just wanted to thank Shelley, and Chief, and Teresa, and Jason for your indulgence during this budget period. I know I have a lot of questions, and you guys have been great with providing tons of information, making our job a lot easier, so thank you.
You're welcome.
We do not need an executive session tonight.
Do not.
The next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn, thank you.